Okay, we're live.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's the planning board meeting of February 3rd in the Village of Irvington. This is a really good Zoom meeting. We didn't have to worry about parking in front of Village Hall with all the snow. So sometimes this Zoom business comes in handy. Laurie, all the taxes up to date?
Sarah.
Sarah.
You got Laurie on your brain.
Yes, they are.
We have minutes that you distributed. We have any comments on the minutes? Anyone? Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of, what was the last meeting, January 6th?
Don't move.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
George is here now.
George, did we get your vote? Hi, George, how you doing?
Good. Sorry for being late, but apparently people like to drive in the city now.
For all the applicants, we have two new, two new members, alternate members. Laurie Davidowitz and Mike Bofoco. I don't believe he's on this meeting, but Laurie Davidowitz is, is on this meeting and will be participating in one of the applications. By the order for tonight, number one is 26 Willow Street. Number two, 129 Rutter Dubois Lane. Number three, 24 Barney Park. Number four, 24 North Esther Street. Number five, 55 Field Terrace. Number six, 19 Matheson Park. Number seven, Esther Buck Properties, 2 South Esther Street. Number eight, 11 Hancock Place. And number nine, 3 Beechwood Road. Okay, we will start with number one, 26 Willow Street. And Kevin, I believe you recused yourself on this property once before. Is that still true?
Correct.
And Laurie Davidowitz will be sitting in for you as the fifth member of the board. Do we have an applicant?
Yes. Yes.
No.
Okay, John, we got you.
Okay, great. If I can show a screen. So, we received comments from, from Han engineers today. Is there anything specific? I think there was one, you know, other, what we're waiting for ZBA approval. We have one comment here from Suzanne, which we can address. The recommendation is that the existing tree on the neighboring yard should be shown on the plans and protected accordingly. We can certainly do that. Is there any other stuff that you guys want to review? We submitted a visual impact study. We made some modifications to the rear yard of the site plan to accommodate some additional screening. And we modified the location of the stormwater system to the front yard in order to maintain minimum setback requirements. I think the tree that is of concern in the note from Suzanne is in this area. There was a neighbor during his zoning board that was concerned that the digging associated with this might affect the tree over here. So we'll see if we can show that.
Did you, the screening that you proposed, did Suzanne get a chance to look at that?
Yeah, that was included, that was included in this, in this submission. And she has notes that she reviewed it. She's not making any specific recommendations.
I thought so, okay. You were supposed to somehow address the view preservation district issues.
Yeah, we did. We, we provided a view preservation analysis that shows visibility of the porch. We don't believe that it affects any rear views. It's obviously not visible from these two views. There is some visibility here, but the, the rear yards are already blocked by, by existing houses.
And any new lighting is dark sky compliant?
It is. That's already indicated on the drawing, I believe.
And, and I think, Ed, did they resolve the basement issue?
We've, we've talked about it. I just didn't want it to become a hindrance.
Okay, but it, it's an engineering thing that can be decided later.
It has to be addressed at building permit. Didn't want it to be something like that.
That part of it.
Okay. All right, any, any comments from the board members? Dan? Dan? Unmute, Dan.
Sorry about that. I was looking at Pat Natarelli's letter to the ZBA. Would John have any comment on that or will he just address that with the ZBA?
We're, we are going back to the ZBA on that. That will address that at the ZBA. Pat spoke at, at the ZBA meeting and our client is planning to review, review his concerns with him. The, the screening that we added follows that letter. So there was no screening addition originally indicated on that. So we've added screening.
To address that issue.
That was, that was our goal, to address it with screening.
I see, okay.
All right, anything else, Dan?
Well, I guess Pat, Pat Natarelli's letter was, again, he would say lot sizes, the, the impact is not consistent with the, the proposed rear end intrusion is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Would John have any comments on that or?
I mean, if you, if you, I mean, we, we don't necessarily agree.
Okay.
And we were making our case to the zoning board that, I mean, the neighborhood, if you, if people know the neighborhood has zero lot line garages on almost every lot. So I think Pat is concerned that, you know, there's a privacy issue potentially from the proposed deck to his yard. We don't believe that we're increasing the privacy issue greatly because there's already a deck in that location. And when you enclose a deck, actually, you know, the way that this is being closed, it may increase privacy to his yard. You know, there's a solid wall sort of facing his side and we're proposing group screening, which isn't there now. And I think his other concern was whether there's a precedent being set. You know, that's really a concern of the zoning board, but in our mind, almost every lot is not conforming at 100%. So I guess in that case, in terms of the character, we don't, we don't agree, so.
Okay, John, the Pat Natarelli's lot is, is, is not immediately adjacent, doesn't butt immediately to the applicant. Isn't it on a diagonal?
Yeah, it's, it's this one. So the lot that is, the lot line that is budding is this, this portion right here. And the area that he was concerned about is the patio here. You know, this, this line here on the drawing shows. Sorry. Oh, that really didn't work. Sorry, making people seasick now. This, this area here is what he is concerned about. You know, the, the view from this deck that's extended out from where it is now into that area, we feel like we can address it with screening. You know, to make sure that there isn't a, or, you know, that we're not making a privacy condition worse. That, you know, that's sort of our approach, right? It's, it's this, this area here. He has a patio back here in this area.
Okay, Dan, anything else?
But I'd be interested in what George has to say.
We're moving down the line. I'll get there.
Okay.
Laurie, you're next. Any comment?
I just wanted to know, whose fence is back there? Does that fence belong to 26 Willow or is it the neighbor's fence, the behind?
Which, which, which fence? There's a wooden fence, there's a plastic fence?
The wooden fence.
So the wooden fence that's being proposed to be replaced is on the, is on the applicant's property. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to know that. And yeah, I visited the site and I reviewed it. So I think I have a good understanding. Thank you.
George?
John, what did, what did zoning have to say?
Zoning was concerned about Pat's letter. And we left the meeting. I, you know, I think there were members of the zoning board that were fine with the screening that we proposed. But we said that our client wanted to speak with Pat directly and see if there's something we could address that made him, made him more comfortable. So that's how we left it. And then we would bring that back to the zoning board at the next meeting.
Okay, so my impression of this is, you know, I, I have a intimate knowledge of this neighborhood. And to say that this is out of character, I, I'm, it's hard for me to understand that. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I, I think that your proposed kind of screening to kind of quell some other issues with, with some of the neighbors is a decent approach, but I think that virtually every single house on this, in this area, with the exception of mine, has been expanded. And so I, I think that we've been through this path many, 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 many times. And I don't see, maybe I'm missing something, how this is so extreme from one of the other things that, that have gone through and been approved. So I don't really have a, a big issue with this personally.
Was that a, you don't have an issue or you do?
No, I do not, no.
Okay, it wasn't clear. Okay, thanks, George. Mike, Mike Smith?
I have no additional questions.
All right, well, I wanted to hear everybody else first because I was in the backyard with Pat. I happened to be up there the day he was driving by. And I mentioned to him while we were standing in his backyard that the predominant feature of his backyard was his immediate neighbor's garage wall, which is, as John pointed out, directly on his property line. And I, I really didn't see, and I'm looking diagonally and the, the proposed screened in porch is, is on the far side of the applicant's house from, as John pointed out. I, I didn't see, didn't, didn't see too much of a concern, especially as everyone pointed out the nature of the neighborhood and is that the garages, including Pat's, is on the property line of their neighbors. Anyway, okay, thank you, board. Sarah, any public?
Nobody's, oh, yes, we have somebody raising their hand to speak. Andy and Betsy from 28 Willow.
Hello. Hello, this is Andrew Robald and Betsy Donovan from 28, which is the house to the south. At the zoning board, we spoke.
That would be the house immediately to the south. Yes.
We realized after the zoning meeting that there's a specific issue with the view and privacy in that it rather looks as though with this extension, there'll be a direct line of sight through our living room into our bedroom. And we would like to see some screening to address that issue.
I, I think that is something we can certainly, we can, we can pick that up in the resubmission to the zoning board. I think we did speak with our client yesterday that she had had a discussion with you guys. I think if you can identify, I can either come out and meet you, but I, I'm assuming it's along the south property line here in the rear yard? Okay. We can identify, I think there's a, a tree here that we would probably, if, you know, there may be some issue in planting, if, if the line was right here, but you know, in this area here that's open, I think the client just basically directed us to provide what you guys want in that area in terms of screening.
John, John, did you say there's an existing tree there, that little X right there?
Tree, tree 04, it seems like, as long as the screening is, you know, to the west of tree 04 into the east of tree 03, which is, I think, where the impact of the proposed addition must be.
The reason I ask, because it's come up before that the planting of new trees, you dig a hole for a new tree and destroy the roots of an existing tree. So you need to be careful of that.
Right. And I think, you know, what we will most likely show is, I, I think what will probably make sense will be a skip law, depending on how, on how shady it is and the height we're trying to achieve. And the alternate would be, you know, more of what we've shown over here. So, you know, I, I think our assumption was that we would, because this issue didn't come up until, you know, recently, and our client had the discussion and agreed to it, that we'll pick it up in the resubmission to zoning board if that's something that you guys would like. And if, if you want to put that contingent on an approval, that contingent on screening along the south property line, that would be fine.
Okay, that's good. We'll, we'll likely do that. Mary Ann, you listening?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? On, on the neighbor?
No, I think we're good at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, I think the applicant has indicated to look at that. And our arborist, not arborist, bio-landscape architect will also look at it. Now, thank you very much for your interest and your comments.
Look at it from, from our perspective. You're both welcome to do that.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, anybody else?
And nobody else is raising their hand and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay, Mary Ann, do we have a resolution?
Yeah.
Did you, did you, does it include, it may have already included the, the screening issues because we talked about.
No, I just wrote it in, okay. Whereas in Jan, whereas in January 2021, Sean and Carolyn Newhouse applied for site development plan approval to replace an existing deck with a screen porch at the rear of their house at 26 Willow Street, which is located in the View Preservation District. And whereas the proposed construction intrudes into the rear yard setback and therefore requires a variance from the zoning board of appeals, and as Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memo dated January 4th, listed a number of issues, all of which were satisfactorily addressed in the subsequent submission. The planning board held a public hearing on the application on January 6th and February 3rd, 2021. Suzanne Nolan, the village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and made one recommendation, which was addressed in the subsequent submission. And whereas the proposed porch would not impact views of the Hudson River from neighboring properties, it's a type 2 action under SECR. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval for the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "New House Residence", and all the sheets are listed, prepared by Ferguson Malone Architects, subject to, one, receiving a rear yard setback variance from the ZBA, two, complying with the Han memorandum dated February 1st, 2021, which just refers to the comment about Suzanne Nolan and identifying that tree and providing tree protection. And three, providing screening along the south property line, such screening to be approved by Suzanne Nolan.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the resolution?
Could I just ask a quick, what if the ZBA kicks it back to us saying something it would?
This resolution leaves it, we're finished with it.
They can't kick it back to you.
Okay, I got you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Don't move.
We have a second? A second?
Second.
Okay, we will vote. I will start at the top. And don't forget to mention authorizing Sarah to sign for you on the, when you vote yes, if you vote yes. Dan?
I vote yes, authorizing Sarah to sign for me.
Laurie?
I vote yes and authorize Sarah to sign on my behalf.
George?
Yes, and Sarah, please sign for me.
Mike Smith?
I vote yes, and I authorize Sarah to sign for me.
This is Caesar. I vote yes and authorize Sarah to sign.
Sarah, the, the resolution that I sent you before, I'm going to send you a replacement that adds this third condition because the screening condition wasn't in there.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay, we're done with 26 Willow. Moving on to number two, 129 Rutter Dubois Lane. John, is that you?
No, I don't think so.
No, I'm about, I'm about to put him back as an attendee.
I hate to be rude, but get lost.
It's William Wood on this one. He was, oh, there he is, okay. You're on muted, okay.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Bill Witt again. I'm here representing my client Stephen Ballot and Mandy Borisaw from 129 Rutter Dubois. At the last planning board meeting, there were several issues or concerns that they wanted us to address. I feel like we've addressed them in the cover letter to, in response to both Mr. Han's report and the comments I've received from the village. Specifically, they had to do with some tree protection on an existing pine at the corner of the property. I also spoke with Ms. Nolan and we agreed on, on methods and notes to address her concerns. I think the only other issue was showing the existing leader drains on the property and a detail of the step coming off the proposed deck. I saw the, the comments we got back today seem to indicate that the only outstanding issue is the zoning variance, which we would very much like to proceed with.
As for coverage, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And what, what, how much is it over on coverage? Just refresh everybody's memory.
We are over, exceeded by 28.6%. Now, we're asking for a 1.5% increase, which, which is basically 39 square feet of additional coverage to relocate the, the steps to the deck and fill in where the existing steps were.
So the existing is over, but this is going to increase the existence by whatever you just said, 39 square feet?
39 square foot, correct. And this is, again, part of the field point development. And I suspect because of the density in that development, that if not, you know, I, I suspect most, if not all residences are over because they're undersized lots for the zone.
Okay. All right, let's canvas the board. Dan?
It, it appears that all the issues that we mentioned before are addressed.
So Kevin, you're back with us on this project?
Could you just remind us of, of why, why the 39 feet more here?
Sure, let me, let me share my screen with you for a second if I could. Okay, so basically, if you look here on the site plan, this is where the existing steps come down. Those steps are currently coming down over majority of a patio that's below it. The, the location and the configuration of the deck make it very difficult to use the deck. It's very tight here at this point. So what we're proposing to is remove these steps, fill in the deck, essentially creating a slightly larger deck in that area and repositioning the steps to the side of the property here. So even though we're, you know, the, the, the new steps are substantially bigger than the 39 square foot, because the existing steps are mostly over the existing patio, that's why it's such a small increase for the new location. But we are filling in where the existing steps are and relocating the, these steps.
Okay, are you saying that the, 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 the existing steps are superimposed? It's, it's not counted as covered because there's a patio underneath it, is that what you're saying?
Yes, majority of it has patio underneath it. And there's a, there's a portion of the new steps that currently have patio underneath them as well. So it's, it's not even like it's the full width or size of the steps that's the increase. And thus the, that's why it's just the 39 square foot that we're asking for.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't have any other questions.
George?
No questions. I think the, the stair location is much better and will seem like less coverage.
Mike Smith?
No further questions.
And I, I use your last name, Mike, because we have another mic, so I have to. There's not too many Caesars, but there's a couple of mics. I have no further comment. Sarah, any public?
There is nobody raising their hand and there are no comments in the chat.
Mary Ann, do we have a resolution?
Yeah. In January 2021, Stephen Ballot applied for site development plan approval to enlarge an existing deck on his property at 129 Rutter Dubois Lane, which is in the field point development, and relocate the stairs from the rear of the existing deck to the side. And whereas the proposed construction requires a coverage variance from the zoning board of appeals, whereas the Field Point Community Association approved the project and imposed several conditions, which were incorporated into the plan submitted on the application. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memo dated January 4th, listed a number of issues, all of which were satisfactorily addressed in the subsequent submission. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on January 6th and February 3rd. Suzanne Nolan, the village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and had no recommendations. The action is a type 2 action under SECR and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval for the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Interior Renovations", Ballot, Borisaw Residence, prepared by William Wood Architects, subject to receiving a coverage variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. We have a motion to approve that resolution?
Don't move.
Seconded, somebody?
I can.
Okay, we'll do the roll call. Dan?
Approve the resolution and authorize Sarah to sign for me.
Kevin?
I voted to approve and authorize Sarah to sign on my behalf.
George?
Approve and authorize Sarah to sign for me.
Mike Smith?
Approve and authorize Sarah to sign for me.
Caesar votes yes and authorizes Sarah to sign for me. Okay, that's the end of Rutter Dubois. Number three was 24 Barney Park.
Okay, that's, that's still me.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, introduce yourself again, please.
Sure. Again, my name is Bill Witt, William P. Witt Architects. I'm here representing my clients Jared Edwards and Rachel Gorman for their property at 24 Barney Park. At the last planning board meeting, there were several issues that came up and they came up at the meeting. They came up on the, the engineer's report specifically of concern were the critical root zone and some of the issues with construction related to the existing large white oak in the back of the property. Other areas of concern had to do with comparisons of the size of our house to neighboring houses as well as the view preservation. My clients had retained the services of Stefan Carlson. He's a certified landscape arborist. He prepared not only a landscape plan, but he also provided quite, quite a detailed narrative explaining some of the reasons and the thought processes behind a few of the trees that we'd like to remove. He also worked with me in developing some mitigation measures so we can safely excavate and, and allow for the additions in the rear of the house. Some of the recommendations also included sliding over the proposed dry wells. And we also went from a wet laid patio at the rear of this house to a dry laid patio at the rear of the house, which should limit the disturbance to the critical roots on of the large tree. I believe he submitted a, a landscape planting plan and a quite extensive narrative to the board just explaining some of the issues that arose or, or ways that he's addressing the issues that arose at the last meeting. In addition, I did prepare a couple of neighborhood drawings. drawings comparisons to show how our property would relate to neighboring houses as far as lot coverage. I'd like to share my screen and bring that up, if I could.
Yes, that would be appreciated.
So on this first image, so this is our neighborhood scale comparison.
If you could, if you could, I have a small screen. If you could blow that up a little bit so I can see the numbers.
Uh, yes. You're asking me to do something? I don't know if I have the capacity. Let's see. How's that? Is that a little better?
Yep.
Okay. So in the upper right-hand corner, you can see, now, for the purposes of my scale comparison up top, I utilized simply the information that was publicly available. So that entails size of buildings. That includes the main house and detached accessory structures. And as you can see, when I compare our proposed house to the neighboring houses, we are right in line. We're existing at 16% of lot coverage for structures. We're proposing at 17.29. Some of the adjacent houses range from 22.38 to as little as 14.77. But I think when you look at this chart, you start getting the picture that we're really in line with the, the massing, or at least the coverage as it relates to the structures on, on this size property. Unfortunately, I don't have the information on everyone's walkways, patios, and decks, but I can tell you every house has got walkways, patios, and decks. Underneath it, I've provided the full information on our subject property. Just, just to be clear, that we are actually asking for 23.42% of coverage, whereas my buildable, excuse me, my structures on the property is 17.29. But once we compare even just the structures on the property at 23.42, you can see that's not far off some of the neighboring houses. 22 Barney Park is at 22.38. And again, that is just assuming the building footprint of the main house and the detached structure doesn't take into account any decks, any patios, or any walkways that would not be publicly available. So I, I believe that this information kind of proves the point that we're not really proposing anything that would be inconsistent with the improvements that have existed in this neighborhood.
Okay. Uh, there was something else I had to... Did you, Ed and, and Bill, I guess, did you... There's a basement, there was a basement exit issue. Did you fix that?
There was. I, we proposed a new egress well that will be out of the existing basement. I did increase my coverage ever so slightly to accommodate for that new well, but I believe it was a very small increase, and I did supply an updated lot coverage calculations to take that into account.
We saw that, Caesar.
Yeah. All right, I think you took care of the trees, and, and you were right about a comprehensive tree report. It was very comprehensive.
Yes, you earned his money, for sure. We did a, we did a view preservation study as well, taking some pictures from neighboring properties. I'm not sure if you'd like me to bring that up for you?
Yeah, go ahead, just briefly.
Okay, so this is just a brief analysis of our property here, and then you can see the points where I stood on the neighbors' properties. Shot one, shot two, shot three, and shot four to show in the direction of the Hudson River. In these images, you can see that these additions, specifically the one in the front, which is a one-story, is gonna have no impact on anyone's views. Unfortunately, views don't exist, but at, it's certainly, it's certainly nothing that we're proposing is gonna create any issues for anyone's Hudson River views.
Okay, thank you. All right, any comment from the board? Dan?
Uh, I'm okay with everything. Thank you.
Kevin?
No, thank you.
George?
Yeah, can, maybe Ed or Bill can tell me. It looks like this building was added to at some time. Is that correct?
You know, I was under the impression that it was, but after doing some more studying, it doesn't appear that there was any addition put on this house. There may have been, there's a small mudroom on the side, which it's, perhaps it may have been enclosed over the years, right about here. But the house itself, by looking at the records, I see no indication, no, no sign in the foundation, no sign in the framing, that this thing had been expanded. I believe this is its original form.
I didn't look, George.
Yeah. It just looks that way.
It, it certainly appears to have a wing added to it, and that was my impression when I first visited the house. But I was not able to find any indication that other permits were pulled for exterior work.
Ed, any history of permits in, in your files that you know of?
Caesar, I didn't, I didn't rifle through it. I, I mean, I, I did rifle through it last month to find the basement, but I didn't really look for that because the footprint matches the Greenberg card, the earlier Greenberg card, and our file.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I mean, I didn't get into the, into the, how it got there.
Okay. George, anything else?
No, I'm fine with it, that's fine.
And Mike Smith?
Uh, I'm fine. I, I appreciated the comparison to the other homes in the neighborhood to, to show that it was consistent with those homes, with the neighborhood. So I have no other questions.
I, I also have no further questions. Sarah, any, any public wishing to speak?
Nobody's raising their hand, and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay, Mary Ann, do we have a resolution on this?
Yeah. Um, whereas in January 2021, Jared Edwards and Rachel Gorman applied for Site Development Plan approval to renovate and construct additions to their house at 24 Barney Park, which is located in the View Preservation District. And whereas proposed construction requires variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals for coverage and FAR. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated January 4th, listed a number of issues, all of which were satisfactorily addressed in the subsequent submission. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on January 6th and February 3rd, 2021. Suzanne Nolan, village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and made several recommendations which were addressed to her satisfaction, whereas the proposed construction would not impact views of the Hudson River from neighboring properties, and whereas it's a type 2 action under SECP, therefore requires no environmental review, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board grants Site Development Plan approval for the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Edwards Residence", and what the sheets listed, the drawings listed, prepared by William Wood, subject to receiving coverage and FAR variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution just read?
No move.
And we have a second?
Second.
All right, here's the roll call for a vote. Dan?
I approve of the resolution and authorize Sarah to sign for me.
Kevin?
I approve and authorize Sarah.
George?
Approve and authorize her.
Mike Smith?
I approve and I authorize Sarah to sign for me.
Uh, Caesar votes yes and authorize Sarah to sign for me. Okay, thank you very much, William.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
24. Number four. Number four being 24 North Astor Street. Can you hear me?
Hello, hi, I see you got Rad on. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Casey Brenner with the law firm Zerran and Steinmetz. David Steinmetz had another meeting tonight, but he may be looking to join if he's able. So if you see him trying to get in, you can let him in. You'll recall from last month that we represent Rad Opichich in connection with his proposed renovation of Unit 13, the only commercial unit within the River House condominium complex located at 24 North Astor Street. We won't repeat all the details of the plans from last meeting, but we are happy to do so if desired. But the basics are, Unit 13 consists of a larger office space and a smaller office space, which Mr. Opichich currently operates his architectural business, Opichich Architects, out of the larger office space. He's looking to convert that space to a residential unit for him and his wife to live in and to move the architectural business into the smaller office space. We would just like to reiterate that Rad is proposing no external changes that would affect the building massing or profiles or otherwise affect views of neighboring property owners. Rad has revised the plans and the site capacity analysis in response to comments from the board and from Han Engineering that we received last month. We also received a, another Han Engineering memorandum today, and Rad is happy to discuss anything further on the technical side tonight. You'll recall the most significant issue raised during the last meeting was the prior zoning board variance that was granted in, I believe, 1987, which allowed for 12 residential units on the property. And this variance also incorporated an agreement with a restrictive covenant limiting the property to 12 residential units that was enforceable by certain property owners and their successors located at 32 North Cottonet Street and 19 North Cottonet Street. It was also enforceable by the village. Since the last meeting, we're, we're pleased to report that we've prepared a declaration of release of this restrictive covenant, of course, in consultation with Mary Ann. And the Cottonet neighbors are currently reviewing that and are preparing to execute the declaration. So we're currently awaiting signatures on that. They have indicated they have no objection to 13 residential units on the property that would result from the proposed project. The declaration releases the restrictive covenant, waives any right to enforce it, and declares that the, the neighbors in the village have no objection to 13 units. Since the village is also a signatory to the declaration, we will request placement on the Board of Trustees next meeting, so to request that the village also execute the agreement. So we are here tonight simply to ask this board to issue the site capacity determination, grant the site plan approval, and refer us to the Zoning Board of Appeals to request the necessary site capacity variance to permit 13 residential units. And we also request that the public hearing be closed tonight. Again, Rad is here to talk through the plans, if necessary, and we're happy to answer any outstanding questions.
Mary Ann, you spoke to, and addressed the agreements and letters that they were satisfactory to your legal review?
Yeah, yeah, they prepared something. We were back and forth on it. I just want, Casey, I just wanted to say one thing. I told you that the next board meeting is February 15th. I'm wrong. That's a holiday. It's the Thursday of that week.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. Great.
She mentioned that this is still subject to signatures. Is it possible to have a resolution conditioned on those signatures?
I have, I have those conditions. I, I have that condition in it that, that, well, first of all, that they have to get, they have to get the sig, it has to be signed before they go to the Zoning Board of Appeals because I think the Zoning Board will require that anyway. And then, prior to getting a CVO, it has to be filed at County Land Records. Those are specified in the resolution I drafted.
And, and there's a rec. is, is addressed in there?
Yeah, that's in there as well.
Um, if, if you don't mind, can I just ask a quick clarifying question? So we understand that the, the next, the next zoning board meeting is later this month. However, the submission deadline is next week. Would we be able to submit to the zoning board pending, assuming that way we'll have the signatures by the time we would appear at the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I mean, what I will do is in your package to the zoning board, include the unexecuted agreement.
Of course.
Um, and then, and then, you know, bring the executed agreement with them because you have to wait that long anyway because the village can't sign onto it till February 18th, anyway.
Right. Okay, thank you.
It might be helpful for me to read through the resolution because it goes through a lot of the deep...
We're gonna do that, but let me, let me go through the comments first.
Okay.
Nobody has commented on this yet. I mean, let me solicit comments, and then you can read the resolution.
I was gonna say, okay, I was gonna suggest that reading it may prompt questions where...
Okay, why don't you read it then?
Yeah, why don't we do, why don't I read it first? Because there's a bunch of stuff in it, and then people might have questions, okay? Um, it's a little longer than usual, so. "In January 2021, Maduslaw Opichich applied for site plan approval and site capacity determination to convert a portion of an existing commercial unit into a two-bedroom residential unit within the River House condominium complex to 24 North Astor. And whereas although there will be no external changes to the building, Section 224-66E of the Village Code requires Site Development Plan approval for the, and I'm quoting, 'alteration of any building in such a way as to create an additional unit'. So that's why you need Site Plan Approval. And whereas the site capacity of the property on which River House is located is eight dwelling units, which is because 21,091 square feet divided by the density factor 2,500, and there are currently 12 units by virtue of a 1987 variance. And the proposed conversion would result in 13 dwelling units, thereby requiring a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And whereas on January 13th, 1987, the ZBA granted a variance to the developer of what is now the River House condominium complex to construct 12 unit, 12 dwelling units, subject to the filing of a restrictive covenant, which included among its provisions that the number of residential units on the property shall not exceed 12. And whereas such restrictive covenant was filed in the Westchester County Clerk's Division of Land Records, and I specify where, and stated that it was enforceable by the owners of 19 North Cottonet Street and of 32 North Cottonet Street and any success, and any successor owner of those properties, as well as by the village of Irvington. And whereas the current owners of 19 North Cottonet Street, Todd and Robin Younger, and 32 North Cottonet Street, Melissa Gross and Christopher Henry, have stated that they have no objection to allowing 13 units in River House and are willing to sign a release of the covenant limiting the number of dwelling units to 12. And I just want to explain one thing here. There are other things in this restrictive covenant, in, in, in this declaration, like that the building can't be, you know, bigger than, you know, can't be bigger than it's currently outlined, the outline of the building. But there's, this, this just refers to the restrictive covenant saying there can only be 12 units, not to the whole declaration. Says, "Whereas applicant's attorneys have prepared a declaration of release of restrictive covenant to be executed by the Youngers, Gross, Henrys and the village of Irvington, which declaration has been reviewed and approved by the village attorney. which declaration has been reviewed and approved by the village attorney. And whereas the planning board finds that the creation of the additional residential unit will increase the need for recreational facilities in the village, and where suitable parkland or recreational facilities cannot properly be located on the site plan. And whereas there's no physical change to the River House pop- property, hence there will be no adverse environmental impacts from the conversion now. Therefore, be it resolved that the planning board issues a negative declaration under this, under SECPRA, and be it further resolved that the planning board determines the site capacity of eight dwelling units, and be it further resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval for the proposed conversion of part of the commercial unit into a residential unit as reflected on the drawings numbered, I listed them prepared by Opich architect, subject to one. Prior to appearing before the zoning board of appeals, execution of the declaration of release of restrictive covenant by all listed parties. And those are the residents of the two houses in the village. Um, two, receiving a site capacity variance from the zoning board of appeals for thirteen dwelling units. And three, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, recording the declaration of release of restrictive covenant in the Westchester County Clerk's office. And four, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy as required by um relevant section of the Irvington zoning code, payment of a fee in lieu of parkland in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Any question?
Okay, any, any comment from the board, Dan?
Uh, I have no comments, Caesar.
Kevin?
Mary Ann, can you repeat that last sentence? That's, that slipped by me. What was it about the parkland payment?
Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a payment in fee, a payment of a fee in lieu of parkland in the amount of thirteen thousand. That's just anytime, anytime there's a new residential unit, depending on whether it's um on the size and, and, and the type of unit, there's, there's, there's a rec- a recreation fee.
Okay, thank you.
You're okay, Kevin? Any comment other than that?
No.
George?
No.
Mike Smith?
No other comments.
I have no other comment than, other than that, um Casey, you did an excellent job. Uh, you presented the case very well in the absence of David Steinmetz.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Any, any, uh, public got a hand up or chat, Sarah?
Uh, nobody's raising their hand and there are no comments in the chat.
Do we have a motion to approve that uh resolution?
Yes, so moved.
Second, somebody?
Second.
Okay, we'll do the roll for the vote. Dan?
I approve of the resolution and authorize Sarah to sign for me.
Kevin?
I also approve and authorize Sarah.
George?
I approve and authorize Sarah.
Mike Smith?
I approve and I authorize Sarah.
And it's Caesar saying yes and authorizing Sarah to sign for me. Okay, thank you very much, Casey.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Um, if, if nineteen Matheson Park is, is next, we, we are actually all staying on for that.
That is, is not next. The next is fifty-five Field Terrace.
Okay.
You get tested one more time, so don't go away. I mean, go away and then come back. Okay, the next uh applicant is fifty-five Field Terrace. Do we have uh representation for that uh application?
If you're here to represent um the application, can you hit the raise hand button?
Sarah, is someone calling in or?
I saw the person on there. I think I saw before, huh? It's Hunt Architecture.
I like, I can see they're on, or they were on.
How are you? Good evening. Um, hello, Mr. Manfredi, Mr. Marin, members of the board. My name is Andrew Hunt. Um, representing Julia and David Welch for fifty-five Field Terrace. And uh we received, let me see if I can share my screen here with you. Uh, we received comments this morning from Han Engineering going through our proposal. Um, adding a few notes here uh as part of the application that we're going through. I can take you quickly through the ask, um, if that's best, and you guys can steer me from there here.
Okay.
So um, well, you, I'm sure you're all uh familiar with the property as uh Sheila was a former board member with you all there. The new clients that have bought here, um, taking on a, a beautiful state, three-plus acres, as we know. Um, and really looking forward to leaving it intact. We are not doing any site work on the property whatsoever. Um, our ask here is, as part of their renovation, uh interior renovation, which will go before our architectural review board, they're looking to um basically take the interior, um, re- renovate the kitchen, and turn the existing garage into a family room coming off that on access. Uh, taking what is uh more of a traditional house layout and, and creating a little bit of uh informality to that with, with what we're doing as part of our, our renovation. Back this up. Um, yeah, in doing so, we're adding new windows, um, changing the access of the, the kitchen so that you get this real from fireplace to hearth type view through the, the house. Um, what this does on the interior, just a few quick glimpses of the, the kitchen as we see this here. Um, you get this access through. From a logistics standpoint and why we're here with you all this evening is the reality of it is that it changes the FAR on the site. Um, the garage being five hundred ninety-four square feet is now added towards the um the FAR on the lot, which is at a max of ten thousand, and we, we get to about sixty-seven hundred with, with this ask, um, still well with under. So just trying to um, you know, put that in front of you and see, see what the comments are going forward.
It's so, to be clear, you're increasing the FAR, but it's well within the limitation.
That's correct.
Okay. Is that it?
Um, yeah, that's all I have for you here.
All right, the, the only, the only question that may have come up is uh construction access. I, you know, you have a nice big driveway, so you, you, you're gonna stay on the driveway if you could confirm that?
Uh, yes, the construction access, I'll, I'll zoom in on this for you here. Um, the intent really is for, you know, any sort of a dumpster or demo, we'll all stay on the driveway, for sure.
Okay. Any comment from uh our board, Dan?
Uh, I have no comments at this time, Caesar. Thank you.
Kevin?
Uh, this, this was in the uh, the Han um uh letter, but uh, can you speak a little bit to the construction staging and, and I guess it's somewhat related to the access question that was just.
Yeah, I thought, I spoke with Han Engineering this morning because I was, I was in a similar mindset of wanting to understand what they were asking for and that. I think it's, my understanding is it's similar to, to what Caesar was asking in that if you were going to do a certain amount of demolition, you're gonna stage a dumpster on the site, you're gonna do um construction prep, that might, that type of thing, that you are located on uh hard surface, and in this case, a pretty substantial driveway, not affecting any of the surrounding site. And so we can, uh, in what we answer back in comments, I can uh dash in that and note a um a, a little footprint of what we would intend as a surface area for that.
Thank you.
George? Is the existing garage a, a two-story structure?
It is not. It's a single story. It's uh, has a pitched roof, but not occupial above. It's just an attic.
So you're just making this into one, one story, is that correct?
It is one story, capping out it's uh, just under twelve feet. Um, so to keep the cubic volume down, but we'll, so we'll, we'll take it up a little bit with um regards to the ceiling height, but it is one story, correct?
Okay, thank you. Mike Smith?
Uh, I have no questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Hunt, are you any relation to the eighteen hundreds architect Hunt who designed the pedestal to the, uh, to the Statue of Liberty?
If only. No, sir, I uh, no relation. That's it.
All right, Sarah, any um, any comment from the public?
Um, nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Um, Mary Ann, do we have a resolution? Mary Ann, I'm not Mary Ann. Yes, Mary Ann, do you have a resolution?
Yeah, I do. Can you hear me? My, I just lost my service altogether.
I can hear you now. Couldn't hear you when I first asked.
All right, yeah, well, good. This is the last resolution, so I hope that, for the first time ever, I got a thing that says my ser- that it's unstable, but okay, I hope I get through this. Okay. In um, February twenty-twenty-one, David and Julia Welch applied for site development plan approval to convert an attached garage into a family room open to a renovated kitchen in their house of fifty-five Field Terrace, which will result in an increase in FAR. And whereas all the project, although the project involves no exterior site work, two twenty-four sixty-six D of the village code requires site development plan approval for the alteration of any building in any manner which would result in an increase of FAR. And whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memo dated February first listed several minor issues, the planning board held a public hearing on the application on February third. Suzanne Nolan reviewed the plans and had one recommendation, type two action under SECPRA. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval for the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Welch Residence. Um, several sheets undated and interior drawings are prepared by Hunt Architecture, subject to addressing Nolan's recommendation in the several items in Hans' February first twenty-twenty-one memorandum.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
To approve.
Second?
Second.
Dan, you want to vote?
I do. Uh, I authorize the resolution and designate Sarah to sign for me.
Kevin?
I au- uh, I move to approve, or I, I approve the resolution and authorize Sarah.
George?
Prove and authorize Sarah.
Mike Smith?
I approve and I authorize Sarah to sign for me.
Uh, Caesar says yes and authorize Sarah to sign. Okay, good luck, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you for your time. Take care.
Uh, that was um fifty-five Field. We're moving on to number six, which is nineteen Matheson Park. Hey, Mike? Your, your father would have known that question because he, he gave Torres that statue, if I remember.
He did. He did.
Okay, you see that Red?
Ron for Matheson Park, please introduce yourself again for this project.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Casey Brenner with the law firm Zerran and Steinmetz. Um, David Steinmetz and I were very recently retained by the Civil Nick in connection with this application. Um, particularly with respect to the legal and zoning issues that have come up. Um, so you didn't see us at, for the meeting last month, but we are recently caught up to speed. Um, we understand that Rad has updated, uh, the project architect, Mr. Opich, um, has updated the submission in response to comments received last month. Um, and that a new memorandum from Han Engineering was received today. Um, I will let Brad discuss the technical aspects in a moment or two. Um, we understand that an area variance uh for coverage will be required for the proposed work. Um, which we will seek from the zoning board. And we also understand that the proposed new driveway access slightly intersects with three other surrounding properties. Um, and the village has requested that easements be prepared for review. Um, which we will prepare and again consult with Mary Ann um before submitting. Um, the applicant has obtained preliminary written confirmation from two of these property owners. I believe that is uh twenty-nine and thirty-five Matheson Park. Um, stating that they would not object to such an easement. Um, in fact, I, it seems the neighboring properties all agree that this would benefit everybody in the area. Um, and I think these communications were included in the recent submission. Um, it's also our understanding that one of the three properties, the third property, involves um the access, the access intersects um what appears to be a private road. And I, I was told that there may be um some dispute over who actually owns this private road at the moment. Um, so we can go into details of, with that if you'd like, but in basically, it's our understanding that the ownership issue has to be resolved um before we can get these easements finalized with respect to that property. And it also appears that the, the intersection with that road um is very, very small. Um, so we don't anticipate it will be an issue with that property owner once we confirm who that property owner is. Um, and Rad or Natasha can clarify um these surrounding properties involved, um if you'd like to look at that closely again. So while the easement is worked through and the ownership issues are sorted out, um, we would respectfully request tonight, if possible, that the board grant the requested site plan approval, and most importantly, permit us to proceed to the zoning board to request the coverage variance um immediately. Um, the outstanding comments currently from Han Engineering seem to mostly can um involve construction details. Um, the applicants would prefer not to spend the time and resources finalizing all of these construction details if we're still unsure whether the zoning board would even con- consider or permit the coverage overage. So we, we think that um these can all be addressed after we go to the zoning board and prior to obtaining a building permit. Um, we also are very hopeful and confident that the ownership issues with respect to that private road can be sorted out. Um, and we will work with Mary Ann to create the necessary easements. And that, we think this can be done simultaneously with the zoning board's review of the variance. And we also understand that a denial or a referral from this board is required before we can proceed to the zoning board. Um, so I will hand it over to Rad if he wants to discuss any of the plans. Otherwise, we um again would request this referral to the zoning board.
All right, well, there are many issues and, and I don't think that's gonna happen. Um, it was requested to, because there's, there's quite a bit of issues with coverage and, and uh the overage. Uh, and even before you go to the zoning board, uh, we asked for, you would need this anyway. You, you, we asked for a neighborhood comparison. Uh, you didn't mention that. Maybe you did it, maybe you didn't. Or maybe you did, but you didn't mention it. Um, the parking area, the parking area of the blacktop, which is not a driveway, has part of coverage, so that, that's an issue. Uh, the pool equipment is now in the, is now, which wasn't shown the first time, is now shown and um is in the rear yard setback, uh, which would require a variance and, and the pool equipment. Um, I, I, me personally, you can move the pool equipment someplace else so that it's not in the, the backyard setback where the noise uh from the equipment might be disturbing a neighbor. Uh, the fence details around the pool are lacking. Uh, use, I, I believe the building is being used as part of the fencing around the pool, and that's very questionable. There, there's certain building requirements uh for that. Um, you mentioned the easement. It's not clear if the chicken coop is going or not, and if it's being taken away, it needs to be shown on the plans as removed. And I don't, I'm not sure about the fire pit. It says it's re- it's, it's portable. Is it being removed or it's not? I mean, there has to be something definitive about the fire pit. Uh, and while you have tree protection, it's not shown on all the plans. Some of the plans have tree protection, but other sheets don't show it, and, and if someone is looking at a sheet that doesn't show, one of the contractors looking at a sheet that's not showing the tree protection is not gonna get done. I mean, that's a housekeeping thing. I'm sure you can take care of that. But other than that, uh, there's a full plate there now, but obviously the critical thing is I'm, I'm not sure if you did the neighborhood comparison. Maybe you can tell me.
Uh, well, we, we, uh, good evening, Radoslaw Opich is the architect for the project. Well, we did the uh, the view preservation uh map, uh, which was.
But that wasn't the question. The question was the neighborhood comparison for coverage.
Nat, Nat, you want to answer that, please?
Uh, Natasha, you're, you're muted. I'm not sure if you connected by, by phone audio.
Well, she's having trouble with audio. We, we did not do that, so, so we need to do that.
Well, certainly, if you're going, if, if we were saying you're ready to go to the zoning board, you would need that. We certainly need it, and you would certainly need it to go to the zoning board, so that's a moot point. Um, now, what is, what about the pool equipment? You're gonna move it away from?
Well, the, 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 the pool equipment is a, is a delicate balance of, you know, trying to stay away from the root structures of the existing trees uh versus having it in the middle of the lawn. Uh, so, you know, i- i- as shown on the drawing, the, the green uh, uh, radiuses around the existing trees, there are roots everywhere. Uh, it's just, it's just a, a cobweb of, of roots and uh.
Well, you know, it's, it's not only rear yard, side, you have rear yard and side yard variances just for the pool equipment. I think you're gonna have to work something out with that. And what about the fence? The de- there's no detail.
And what about the fence? There's no details on the fence. The pool fence.
We have, we have description of the fence. We don't have a drawing of the fence yet, but we have a description of the fence.
That's truly lacking.
Well, the fence is shown on the plan, the perimeter around the pool is shown on the plan.
There's no details for the fence. The pool fences have to meet certain specifications by, by, by the state requirements.
And local code.
And local code. And it's to put a line on the plan that there's going to be a fence there and doesn't do anything to let us know whether it meets the code of the state and the village.
Okay, we have a description. We don't have a drawing. That's correct.
And is the chicken coop is going or not? Is the chicken coop going? You have to, if it's going, it's got to be shown that it's going, not absent on plans.
So Brad, just to make it simpler, a lot of the stuff was in the memo, wasn't represented in the plan. Simple, like the coop that you said is moving, but we don't know where the coop is. So when it gets into the field, it's going to be a problem and we need, you know, to understand that location as well. The fire pit, you put in your memo that you're, it'll be a portable one, but it's not labeled on the plans as such. It's still sets fire pit both on all, actually all three drawings, the architectural, the engineering and the landscape architect. So it's little things like that. The landscape architect's plan references nine point one, nine point two, but they're not there. I'm assuming that's the gate details and the fence details you're talking about.
Those are notes on the drawing that there's.
That they're not on the drawing, that they're not even, it's identified on the site plan for the landscape architect, but there's no detail shown. And there's no nine one, there's just nine.
There is nine one on the drawing. I'm looking at it. It's right. It's, 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 well, listen. We're, I don't want to waste everybody's time looking at notes on my drawing. We'll address it. We had notes on all these things, not drawings. If we need drawings, we'll do drawings. I got it.
And I have a question. How did the fire pit become portable? Once you bring it out?
No, no, they can put a fire pit on an existing patio. It's just not, it's not clear.
Doesn't count as coverage then.
Well, it doesn't count as a structure.
Yeah, okay. Well, you can work. I think you have some homework to do with Ed between now and our next planning board meeting. I think you really need to work on the pool equipment and I think you really need to work on the neighborhood comparison for coverage. And in addition to the driveway easement question. I would say the most significant issues are the pool equipment, the neighborhood comparison for coverage and the driveway. The rest of the stuff is details that can be worked out between now and the next meeting. And the fence, the pool fence, Ed, would you explain, there's new rules about using a building?
Yeah, I'll send you the staple code that changed May seventeen, two thousand twenty. It's, it gets rid of, if you had an automatic cover, you didn't need certain things. That's been removed. House barriers, there's new rules for that as well. I'll send you the whole code section.
Yeah, the using a house as a barrier gets very complicated. It wasn't as complicated as before. It may, it may be something you might consider a total fence and not use the house at all because of the new rules. And you need to be cognizant of that. Okay. Okay, any other comment from the board? Dan?
I have none, Caesar. You covered it every.
No, thank you.
George?
So the easement is, seems to be like an issue that hopefully it's going to get resolved. How impactful is it if you don't get it? In other words, all of a sudden it falls apart. Can this?
Then the driveway will, will connect to the private drive in front of the existing house.
Okay, so you have, you have an alternative. I don't see the drawing, so I don't remember to be honest.
It will be, it would be, it would be similar to where it is now, if we cannot get the new drive.
So you're trying to do an improvement based on this and you're going to go through all this effort to make that happen? Got it. Okay.
That's the wishes of the client, yes.
Yeah, sure. And the only other thing was about the neighborhood analysis, that's considered whenever you have coverage issues, that's always part of the package. And there's a formula that everyone else uses that I'm sure I can kind of go through how to do it.
That was a new, that was a new comment, just so you know. That wasn't from last month.
I'll send them some of the other neighborhoods' applications, everything uses a baseline.
Great. Thank you.
If you were listening to Barney Park, you can see what they did for neighborhood comparison.
Great. And thank you, Doug. Natasha, who's having some audio issues tonight, noted that in the chat. I'm not sure if you guys can see it, but reflecting what Doug just said.
Don't forget the, I didn't mention it again, I didn't highlight it enough. The parking area is part of the coverage, the parking lot. It's not part of the driveway. It's literally a parking lot, so you may want to consider that as part of the.
Brad, why don't you send us that calculation sooner than later on? We can take a look at it, make sure.
I mean, the parking area may be part of the coverage over.
It's not, it's not, it's not included in the application, yeah. And the turnaround at the end of the driveway also, is that a turnaround? Is that a parking area? It's like a hammerhead look. If it's a parking area, it's coverage as well.
Was that, was that part of the calculation that they?
It wasn't included in the submitted calculations.
Well, so then the overage that they reported could be more if one looks at the parking area.
That's correct.
So to clarify, if it's a turnaround area, it's not included or?
Well, driveways and roads are not counted in coverage and don't ask why. It's in the code. It's been in the code since I've been here, I've been in the code when I leave. But parking areas are included in coverage. So is it a parking area, is it a turnaround? We need to know. It's not that solidly shaped. It's, it's all on that property, so it doesn't, I don't know, is it a turnaround or is it a hammerhead?
It's a turnaround.
Okay, then identify it as such.
Now, we get into this on other applications. When does a driveway become a parking lot and when does it become coverage? So rather than be, rather than not know, you need to articulate, just as Ed just explained.
Understood.
It's sort of like, when, when does an arrow become a spear? You know, you can argue that forever, I guess.
An impact.
Okay. I think you really need to look at the pool equipment, so I can't emphasize that enough. Okay, George, anything else? I didn't get the mic yet.
I would also echo what you're saying about the pool equipment because this has been brought up previously on other applications. And what we usually ask for is alternative places. And if they don't work, then to kind of prove why. And that, you know, that then shows why your solution is the best or not.
In the past, you guys also, if it was, if you were to entertain it.
And I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about root disturbance on pool equipment slab. Mike, well, George, I'm sorry. Anything else, George?
No, I'm good there for that. Thank you.
Mike Smith?
No, everything is, has been covered.
Any, any members of the public, Sarah out there?
Everybody's raising their hand and there's no comments from the public in the chat.
Any further comment from the applicants?
Brad, do we understand what, what needs to be done?
Yes.
We'll work with Ed if we need to. Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed is most certainly available to work on these things. Right, Ed?
Doesn't seem so enthusiastic.
Okay, thank, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was Matheson. That was number six. Number seven. Number seven is two South Esther Street.
Hello? John Malone, First One Architecture, representing Astro Buck Properties. We received Doug's comments on the project. The first item, Caesar, if you want me to go different way, the first item is the easement agreement. We believe that we've come to a final draft on that with exhibits. It's been reviewed with Mary Ann. I think we just were wondering if Ed or any of the board has any, I mean, I guess Ed was CC'd on it. If there's any additional changes we need to make, but we believe we're very close on that and Mary Ann has no more comments on that.
I haven't had a chance to look at it, John.
Okay. You're talking about the agreement because there's two property owners and it needs to be some form of legal document regarding that.
Correct, correct.
Mary Ann, you want to jump in here?
No, I mean, we've been, we've been back and forth on it. You know, the first draft wasn't, didn't have a right. So we've been back and forth, John's been working with their attorney, explaining to them a little bit better what we needed. And the last, the last version I saw seems to be the right set of easements.
But they're not signed yet.
No.
I think that was something, a question that we had.
Yeah, because actually we should, we should not, I mean, we know what both the property owners are. I mean, it's not like, it's not like one of the other situations where it's an outside person, you know, it's a non-involved party that you're getting to sign something. It's both of these property owners. And the way it's written, the way, the way the easements are written and they should be written assumes that the that the parking spaces are there, that the garage is there. So what I would do is make a condition of the resolution that the agreement, that the C of all can't issue until the agreement is filed with Land Records. So, so once it's, once they've done the work and then, then they can execute the agreement and file it with Land Records. But they won't get a C of all unless, until it's filed.
Now, John, the real critical issue is ADA compliant. And I know you and Ed have been going back and forth on this and I don't think it's there yet and that's an issue for, that might prevent any resolution tonight.
Yeah, Ed and I have spoken. I think his, his focus of the ADA is related to the elevator, which is an existing condition. We've spoken with, to the owner and the owner is putting together options to either replace the elevator with a single story elevator that would give ADA compliance to the top level or replace the elevator within the main shaft. And so, you know, we're going to move forward with that. I think Ed's, you know, I spoke with Ed about it. I think it's something that can be addressed at building permit because it is something that is really a building permit requirement.
I had to sign my name on something that's not ADA definitively.
And John, the ADA spaces are behind a closed door.
So I talked to Bill about that today. The juror can go. There's no issue with that. I'll take it off now. Yeah.
So that on the next plan as well.
Okay.
Note it well.
And the other engineering issue which you can work on is the, there's still some stairwell issues. Ed, you want to get into that or?
Yeah, just John, if you can, if you can spruce up the remaining retaining walls and staircases there. More on the, the engineer didn't really detail them as much as the more architectural drawings.
Yeah, I think, I talked to Doug about it today and went through it. I think the only issue that we found was there's two, there's two footings that have long toes and they basically sit on top of each other. So they would be combined as one footing. I think to clarify that, we could provide a footing plan for those retaining walls and that would probably cover it.
Yeah, it should be further along to confirm at least at minimum that it's doable and what it's retaining.
Right.
I think where it's using the wall, the main wall, that's good. It's just from there up is where I'm concerned.
Yeah, and I think what Doug pointed out is that there was, if there was, if one of the wall details was used in this area, it has a heel and the heel would go over the property line into the village property. So that would be clarified in the, you know, in a footing document where you see that the heel, there's whatever, that wall's not used there. It's all toe. So we can clarify that just to make sure that it, you know.
John, can you also include a section through the wall, the stormwater system and the beginning of that slope also that shows everything that way?
I would like to just basically, an architectural section that I can't seem to get civil and structural to produce.
Exactly, yes.
I will do it. You want both of the, yes, all of the same sheet. I got you. Yeah, we can do that.
The main issue here, John, is the elevator and ADA. So you really need to straighten that out before we come to a resolution.
Okay.
And I met some people, I met some people up at Halsey Pond and I had forgotten at that time that we had an ADA issue. But coming back to the house, I looked at my notes and oh, there's ADA in big bold letters. So.
Right. And I think from, you know, we just needed clarification on what, what the ADA things were. We understand now that it's related to the elevator and, you know.
It's really access to a public assembly space.
Right.
Anybody, you have to make it ADA compliant.
Right.
It's not a warehouse. It's not a business. It's an assembly space.
Right. Right. So, yeah, no, we understand that now. So we just have to, you know, confirm the approach to the elevator and then to see if that approach to the elevator has any effect on any layout, right? So we'll address that at the same time and we'll get that back. And I think, you know, we can, you know, both of those things are, you know, something we can address next time. And then in terms of the easement, we'll submit the easement as is, understanding that, you know, the requirement will be that it'll be executed once the thing is complete. And Mary Ann discussed that basically the easement is written for the thing to be complete. It wouldn't make sense if the garage wasn't there. Okay.
Mary Ann, you hear that?
Yeah, that's what I said earlier.
Yeah, that's what Mary Ann said, yeah.
All right, I think we're done here. We'll see you next time, John.
Okay, thanks a lot.
That was number. Okay, we're finished with two South Esther. We're moving on to number eight, which is ten Hancock Place.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. How are you doing this evening? James Crap from Studio Park, representing ten Hancock Place, Richard Pascoe. This is an application for requesting a variance for ground coverage, looking for relief for proposed patios and pool to be added. We just received our comments from Han earlier today and we're reviewing them. Majority of them can be addressed quite easily. What we're, the major ask that we're coming for is just relief of ground cover based upon what is essentially an undersized lot for this IF forty zoning. This is a, about a twenty-eight thousand square foot lot in a forty thousand square foot zoning area. So therefore, we're only about a hundred and thirty square feet from reaching capacity, doing anything to the property. So subsequently adding a pool and any patio of any kind would push us over that a hundred and thirty remaining square feet. So subsequently, we're looking for relief closer to that of a twenty thousand square foot lot, which is more in keeping with our lot. You can see in all the comments that came back from Han, the percentages that we're putting in place. But we do believe that this is in keeping with the neighborhood and not unusual for property of this scale. So that's the bulk of it and I submit. I submit any questions?
Yeah, your, your, your coverage is quite substantial, 30%. And it appears that you have some really huge patios and and I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of 30% coverage when you have, I think you have to talk to your client and see how much of those patios are absolutely essential. 30% is an awful lot. And if you're going to go over on the coverage, you need to do a neighborhood comparison. If you were listening, we've done that before tonight. And it's a problem. 30% is a problem. That's very substantial. It's not like, oh, 30%, give us your approval. It, it's an issue. And, and in terms of the, the pool orientation, you, it's, it's oriented east-west on one set of plans and north-south on another set of plans. For the planting, the planting orientation is different than the engineering orientation. And it may change. I don't know which way is the correct way, but if the planting orientation is going to change, it may, may change the comments from our landscape architect in terms of tree root disturbance. And.
Can I ask where, where do you see that in a different orientation? Where?
Yes, you go to the planting plan at the end of the package that was submitted.
I believe it was the tree report or the?
The tree report. We, the tree report was done in like September. We adjusted the plan. The tree report, we had it edited. And I even believe we updated the two pages.
Well, excuse me, but what I looked at, they were different. So you may have changed it, but what you changed, I didn't see. What I saw was the pool going one way in one section and the pool going the other way in another section. And if, if the, if the pool on the planting plan that I saw is going to be different and more closely related to the engineering plan, then the arch, the landscape architect may change her opinion because digging a pool and disturbing roots could be an issue with, with the proper orientation as opposed to the orientation that's different than the engineering, if you understood.
We can, we can clarify the discrepancy in the tree planting plan or tree existing plan. Technically, it isn't a planting plan at this time. It's just archery survey to make sure that we're not impacting tree roots in any of those areas, but we can fix it.
Well, it, it should be a, a report that relates to any trees that are coming out, any trees that are going to have root disturbance because you're digging a pool. And if there is root disturbance, it's not unusual to come up, get an arborist to do a mitigation plan that, oh, we're going to take, I don't know, I'll pick a number. We're going to take 10% of the roots or 30% of the roots. And in order to keep the tree from dying because we took so much percentage of root, we have a mitigation plant to feed and treat the tree. You know, so it, it, it is more than just a presentation of, oh, this is what we might do. There is some significance to it.
Understood. And we, that's why we did the plan to avoid any location that we placed the pool in, in either orientation that you're looking at.
Well, it was, it was, it was a nice presentation, except the pool was pointing in different directions. So at least what I looked at. And if it was in the correct direction, it would have been a fine presentation. But you need to get into the roots of, of root disturbance and mitigation if there is root disturbance when you dig a big hole in the ground. The other thing is the, the pool fencing. You're, the existing fence is, is already in the Croton buffer. And it's, it, it doesn't meet the code for a pool fence. So you're going to have to adjust the fence to meet the code. And Ed, you can meet separately offline to discuss the code or Ed can send you the code.
Yeah, the existing fence doesn't meet the code and you didn't show the proposed fence, if you're going to include that.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't shown the visual representation of the interior fence that goes on the inside. What's the, what's the problem with the existing chain link?
Oh, I'll send you the code. The village has a code and the I think the chain link is too short and the board and Baton has an intermediate one of 43 inches.
Oh, you're saying the mid, the mid rail height on the next door. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Keep in mind, if you do any work on the existing fence that's in the, already in the buffer zone, that would require ZBA approval to work in the buffer zone.
I presume that that will happen anywhere. Yes.
Also, I think you have the drainage disposal, stormwater disposal is in the buffer zone.
That is correct. And I believe that's something we can adjust. I think we can slide it within the buffer and not have any disturbance. So that might not be necessary. That's something we can change with our civil engineer.
I think you should work on that. And I, I did see one of the pictures that, that, you know, from the house, looking at the fence that's parallel, at the fence, the property line that's parallel to the Croton Aqueduct. It looked like there was some screening there. I, I think you just get our landscape architect to, to agree that that existing screen doesn't need supplement, or maybe it does need supplement. I don't know. That's something that our landscape architect handles. So that would be worth discussing that.
Yeah, we can propose some additional screening if it's not dense enough for her liking.
Yeah, that would be good. If you're coming back anyway. So, but the main issue is this coverage and, and when just eyeballing and guesstimating, you've got huge patios that is going into the calculation of this 30, at least 30% over coverage. You may want to discuss it with your client because 30% is a real stretch. They want to talk about the, the patios because you're expanding an existing patio and you the, the one whole length of the pool is patio and extends up. And, and if there's any kind of substantial coverage variance, you'll need to do it, if you were listening, a neighborhood comparison of, of how does, how does, if you're going to have an overage on coverage, how does that compare to the neighboring homes? For example, if, if you're looking for a 5%, if, if everybody is 5 or 6%, then you're, 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 you're in the same context of the neighborhood. But if you're looking for 30% and there's nobody at 30%, you're, you're out in left field. And which would be something that I wouldn't approve. Okay.
Can I ask a, can I ask a quick question just regarding the comment about the orientation of the pool? Can I potentially share my screen to just clarify?
But you, I'm sure you have it correct in way. I can only go by what I saw and, you know.
No, that's why I, I just want to make sure you're seeing the same thing I'm seeing. I don't want to, I don't want to get it wrong again.
I could, if you just call me tomorrow, I'll, I'll show you where it is.
But trust me, I know what I saw. And, and since I questioned myself, I asked our engineer, Doug Han, am I seeing this cockeyed? And he got back, we know you're seeing it correct. So.
Gotcha.
All right, let's, let's canvas the board. Dan?
I have no questions, Caesar. Thank you.
You can add anything that will, if you can add anything on, on whatever I said, if you have an opinion on.
I, I think you covered a lot there, Caesar, with neighborhood comparisons, you know, which we heard about earlier.
I think a critical issue here is the 30% that they're asking for.
Yeah, which is quite substantial. Yeah.
Kevin?
I have nothing to add. It was very thorough. So I just look forward to receiving some of the revisions and some of the responses.
George?
I think that this is not the first application that, that's budding the aqueduct. So the buffer in there becomes very important. And so I, I would be keenly aware of what you're planning to do as far as landscaping and such. Because I know on another one, we, we went through a pretty extensive thing with that. And as far as coverage, I think Caesar said it great. And it's really the onus is on you guys to figure out how you can explain to us and justify why you need to have such a an overage. And, and so we'll leave it to you to try to do that.
No doubt.
I, I, I don't, trust me, if you're going to try to justify 30%, you might be spinning your wheels. I want to be, I want to be fair. Mike?
I have nothing to add to what's already been said. Thanks.
Sarah, anything on the public?
Nobody's raising their hand and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation and I, I hope you and your client can come to some reconciliation on coverage. And, and again, the, the, as George said, the Croton Aqueduct buffer is, is very vital to the village and and that fence, any work on the fences is going to need a waiver and it's already in the buffer. So it's, it's pre-existing, but it, it'll have to look, the resulting new fence would have to look appropriate for any waivers of the way it looks in the new version that can protect the pool.
Well, subsequently, it's our, it's our desire to keep things clean both directions. So we'll provide extra information and we'll look to see what we can do to, to minimize the impact.
Yeah. And, and the root protection, when you dig the pool is, is something our landscape architect is very much interested in. And so.
We are too.
So if you're going to disturb roots, you know, be ready with a mitigation plan.
I hope not to.
But we don't have to ask for it the next meeting.
I would just say, simply add one thing about the aqueduct too, is that, you know, that's really, in my opinion, a, a street that is the benefit of the village. So when you're doing your landscaping plan, you have to look at it from both your side and the Irvington side.
Yeah, some pictures, I know you, you provided pictures from the house out to the property line, but and I, I think I saw a picture on the aqueduct side, looking at the property. Maybe a few more and, and how it, how, how the projection of anything new might look. Okay?
Sure. No problem.
All right. Was that James?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think we covered everybody on the board. Sarah, I asked you about the public. Did we get an answer?
Yeah, there's nobody raising their hand and there are no comments in the chat.
I wasn't sure if I asked you that already. I think I already did. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll see you next time.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. That was number eight. Number nine is three Beechwood Road.
Caesar, how many do we have?
One more. This is it.
This is the last one.
Good.
Last application at a Dodge.
Evening. Can you see me, hear me? Steven Bassini, I'm here, S J V Architecture, representing Michael and Randy Sirota at Three Beechwood.
For some reason, your, your volume is very low. You might want to get a little closer.
Microphone. Can you hear me if I speak a little louder?
That's a little better. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll project. So I'm here tonight for site plan approval. We're also going to be requiring a variance for the front yard. This is a, a, a property in Three Beechwood with two front yards. It's bordering on a Broadway on the west side. And it is, I'm sorry, on the, on the east side. And it's also obviously on Beechwood. So there's two setbacks. The front yard require a, a five yard setback in the 35 foot required. And we don't propose any other variances required. For the planning purposes, what we're, we're requesting is to demolish an existing porch deck rather in the back. It's 361 square feet. We're proposing an addition of 129, which totals at 490. We're requesting the removal of a front porch, 63 square feet and a walkway and adding about 102 square feet to the porch, 29 to the walkway and a proposed patio in the rear, which currently does not exist, totaling 487 square feet. The allowance for this lot size, which is in a, an I-20 zone, is 3,200 square feet plus, which actually 3,202 square feet. And what we're doing is we're coming in at 20, 3198 and change, point five, but it rounded it up on the application. So the patio, I'm going to share the screen now so I can go through the drawing if that's all right?
All right.
Thank you. So the drawing that you saw is this here. The front porch exists currently right here in this area, small front porch. The proposal is to grade this area here. You can see the proposed contour of 178, lifting up this corner here in this area, grading this to have more of a walkout, front porch here, all at the same grade, one step down. That would go across the front of the house. And there's pictures of the house, which I'm sure you've done a site walk or somebody has, maybe you've seen it, but that's what currently exists. So this porch would come out and we'd like to do a porch roof right across here. Basically at the height of just below these windows to incorporate these bay window roofs. And that would all be at the same level. So you'd be one step down from the front door and one step down to the yard. So this intends to be filled in here. And then in the back of the house, there is this existing wood deck. Right there at about five foot grade here and about six foot above grade on the corner. The proposal is to remove that and then put a patio in this area here where there's probably a small little garden here. But this would be all filled in as a patio and the deck would be rebuilt. Going back to the.
Hold it a second.
Oh, yeah.
You're taking the deck down and putting it back.
A larger deck. That's correct.
A larger deck. Okay.
Yes.
In addition to the patio to the left there.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And the, the new deck will be as elevated as the current one.
It'll be at the same elevation. That's correct.
Okay.
And if you look actually in the site plan where we're coming out to, we're coming out, there's this dotted line is existing deck. We're only coming out about a foot past that. So as far as the elevation above grade, it really will be the same. You're not going to be towering any further out in the backyard. So the proposal again is to remove this, build this deck. The, the deck would then step down about six steps down to the patio, which then steps down to the backyard. So the, we do not, we're not requesting any coverage variances. We came in underneath the allotted. However, I know, and I can go through a few of the comments from Han Engineering, but one of them was that there may, seems to be discrepancy. I talked to your consulting engineer today about a few of these items, which I'll address, but one of them was that. We'll, I will clear that up. What I did was I prepared the FAR coverages here, but I will also provide and certify the building areas to, to ensure that we do not exceed any coverage on the property. That is not the intention is to ask for variance for that at all. So, go ahead. Sorry, Chairman.
If you've done, I have a, the, the front yard.
Yes.
Front, that's going to require, the way we're, we're looking at the plans, it looks like we're, you're going to need a front yard setback variance.
That is the front yard setback. Yes. Right now, currently you're at 30.9 to the existing porch. We're asking for about another foot. So we'd be at 30 feet. So we're asking for a five foot variance in the front yard. On that front yard facing Beechwood. There's the other front yard facing Broadway, but that's not applicable.
Did you show the, you know, there's a Broadway buffer zone at 50 feet?
Sure. That was why I was going to address that when I went through the engineering memo. But yes, I did not show that buffer on here. We did, I took it into account when locating drainage structures. But we did not show it on here and I will show that for the next revision.
But the, the drainage structure is not, is or is not in the buffer?
It is, it is not. However, the, where I show the line of disturbance, it is. So I'm going to just shift those and, and avoid any infringement on the buffer, whether it be disturbance, still fence or anything.
And the fence along Broadway, is that going to be adjusted or?
Well, the fence, we plan to, I, I discussed that as well. Item number, number two, I think it was for the fence and Broadway buffer that Han mentioned. I looked through the code. I did not find where that was considered a structure or a building necessarily would require permission to do that. Obviously, we're here for planning board. We need permission to, to put a fence up, but the buffer shouldn't have impact on that.
Anything in the, anything in the.
It's an activity in the buffer, Steve. It needs, and you can replace an existing documented fence, which that is.
Got it.
If you're changing the style or anything, you need to go include that in a ZBA application.
In a ZBA application?
Yeah, ZBA is the only one has the authority to deal with the activities in the buffer.
Okay. So then what, what I could talk to the client about is, is, well, we're going to the zoning board already for the front yard variance. I have not had to propose a change of the fence in a buffer, Broadway buffer zone.
Yeah, it's just not, you didn't describe what you were replacing it with, other than it's going to be six and a half feet.
It will be tasteful, obviously, but is that an issue with the zoning board?
That's, that's, then you're going to ZBA as well. That's then you go to Z B A as well as a A R B.
Okay, can I ask if we do not, if we replace just the side that's in the facing Broadway? Do I also have to worry about the fifty feet going along the two side yards? Because that's still technically in the buffer? Okay, so any any part of that fence back there?
Yeah, I mean, what's there now?
It's a wood slat fence.
How high?
Six feet.
Okay. I mean, are you doing, are you going to do another wood slat fence?
I I the client and I are discussing what's going to do. I figured that was more of an A R B issue. I didn't realize that.
No, I I it's just, we don't want you to go to A R B. We don't want you, we want you to go to A R B and get it resolved if you have to. But what I want to do is change it later and have to go back.
I understand. Okay, so we'll decide that for the next planning board meeting and and have that resolved, whatever that fence is.
Yeah, and anything in the fifty-foot buffer zone is is reviewable on a change or, you know, intrusion, any intrusion or any activity. There's a whole section on the Crotton.
Yeah, I read it, the two twenty-four fifty-one Broadway buffer. That's where I didn't see fences, so I guess I misunderstood.
A fence is a building in our code or structure.
It's implied.
You give the definition.
Okay, we'll resolve that. No problem. Okay, since we're on that, the Hans memo, may I address a couple of the other items, Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So the first item that you mentioned, the item number two, I think we've just resolved that. I'll make sure the variance the drainage and any disturbances out of the buffer and we'll address the fence. The building area, I already mentioned, I will put a coverage on the next middle and certify those dimensions that we're not exceeding any coverage requirements. All the most, the majority of these items I can address, no problem. I'll put a narrative letter explaining where they are in the drawings. Just a couple of items. Number five, there is no proposed crawl space or basement with any of our foundations we're proposing. So no foundation drainage would be proposed or required. Number ten, if there's a driveway issue with the drainage, I'll address that. I'll go out in the field, take a look, talk to the client. But I don't believe there is. If there is, we will address that as well. And number thirteen, the infiltration system, yeah, that right now, what I show, I'm zooming in on the plan, but I show this leader tied into the chambers. This leader should also be tied into the chambers, and I'll talk with Doug, and if that satisfies the drainage, which I think it should, then I'll make that correction. And then the only thing about the coverage calculations, I did a comparative study on this sheet here, and I corrected it after seeing the memo just to remove the driveways. I didn't graphically, but I did mathematically here. You can see what I did was before I included the driveways in the coverage, I recognized that that is not the case in Irvington. But in essence, we're still close to the neighborhood as far as building coverage without the drivers. So these red marks here, these red numbers, that is the applicant's post-coverage of thirty-one ninety-eight. Next door is twenty-nine sixty-two, two houses away is thirty-three thirty-nine. These are all estimated, of course. Forty-nine Beechwood is four thousand sixty-four, and forty-seven Beechwood is twenty-eight seventy-four. So as we are also under the allowable coverage, I believe we're still in the character of the neighborhood. Yes.
The 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 coverage worksheet you sent us showed an overage.
I think he said because he had the driveway in there.
I didn't. Okay.
Yeah, the coverage worksheet, right. He included the driveways. In Hans memo, he asked me to revise that.
Okay, good. Yeah, cool. I just want to make sure we got it right.
No problem. Thank you. And then the last item was, I I know there's questions about grading, and Suzanne had mentioned that as well, about wanting to show wall heights and what was being disturbed in the rear yard. There are trees in the rear yard that we have avoided as far as the drip lines and the roots. But I understand that this board may want to see that and assurance of that, so I will show those trees for the next meeting.
I think she had concerns about showing some screening.
And I want to show that, too.
You got neighbors on either side and also the view from Broadway to see the deck, you know, I I think she was interested in seeing some screening.
Okay, so what I what I read was that she was concerned about, I'm not sure, that I guess the neighbors, because we have a six-foot fence going up around property, and and the deck already exists. What we're what we're doing actually is patio that will be below the fence. But can I show you the Broadway? If you don't mind, I'm going to switch the share screen because it's important, I think.
Okay.
What I was looking at here. I want to stop the share. Hold on a second. I don't know why I can share the screen. Here it is. Okay, we shared on this. Okay, so this is South Broadway. That in the distance where my hand is right there is the applicant's house.
Okay.
So this actually, the backyard is up about four feet. If you zoom in on this down south broadly, you can see where this car is. This car, the height of this car is about the top of the wall here. So as far as screening is concerned, you really can't see that. That's not, that's the house there again in gray. So the the property is four feet up from the street, and then there's a six-foot fence, and then there's this screening here that exists. I don't know that there's anything more required, honestly, because you can't
Okay, let's get Suzanne to concur with that.
I will. I will.
Now, is that is that the wood fence going to be replaced? Because it looks like it's in disrepair.
That's the one. That's the fence we're replacing. Yes.
You're going to put a in kind like what that looks like, a plain wood stockade fence?
Well, that's what we just discussed with Ed, and I'm going to, obviously, if I don't replace it like that, if they don't replace it like that, I need to get a variance, so. I'll talk
I just have to bring it to their attention.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Let's find out what you want to do, and we'll come up with a plan.
No problem, but that is the fence, Chairman. Yes, that's the one we replaced.
All right, the the to be frank, the major issue is is the front yard setback and and putting a porch on the entire front of the house. Driving through the neighborhood, I I didn't see too many porches. In fact, I don't recall seeing any porches for the full length of the house. It has a potential of changing the character of the neighborhood, so we would need to see some work on that and and justification for not so much the fact that the front yard setback, but the way it looks with the porch being very dominant in a neighborhood that doesn't have any porches. And and also, I guess, the setback. Are there any other houses that are that are beyond the front yard setback? It was hard to tell just driving around. It didn't appear that. It looked like all the houses were built around the same time and the same style. So which lends itself, lends me to believe that that they were all within the front yard allowable distance.
This one was built with the porch outside of the setback as well, I mean, infringing on the setback as well, the existing porch. But I guess if they were all in that same vein, I guess I'd have to assume there are other houses.
And in talking to Ed, that that porch would have was was pre some codes, which would have required a variance just for that porch. Ed, you want to chime in? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Yeah. That's the original porch from the original approval. Today, the roof would be not allowed. The steps and the walkway would be allowed, but the roof would be not allowed. But in eighty-nine, when the house was built, it apparently was allowed.
Well, you could work on that. We we had some, we had some issues with the porch being in in the front yard setback and dominating the entire view of the entire house. And and maybe you could work on that, comparing it to the rest of the neighborhood. Maybe maybe some of the other board members can articulate that issue better than I.
Well, I would have to say that I am more than enthusiastic about this porch for many reasons.
This is George speaking, right?
Yes, and one of them being is porches are great places to sit outside and to encourage the concept of porches in neighborhoods is actually a good for me. And the porch that's there, which is just sort of this little covering over the the entrance, it's just so weak. And I think that this house is going to look significantly better with this addition of this porch. So
Okay.
I'm enthusiastic about supporting that.
Okay, George, that's that's very good comment. I appreciate it. And it sounds very good. Okay, any other board members? Dan?
No, I have no comment. I would echo George's comment about the porch being
Kevin?
My my only comment is, and I don't know if it's it's the appropriate forum, but in this in on Broadway, that sure would be a great place for a sidewalk on the opposite side, if we could ever accomplish that, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah. I I think there's a, isn't there a sidewalk on the
On the west side. But it's a difficult, it's very difficult to cross Broadway in that range. And so it's, you'll often see people sprinting across as as you're driving down Broadway because it's a because it's complicated.
I don't know if that's, yeah, that that, you know, putting a sidewalk in something for the village to look at. George, anything else? That was a good comment. Anything else?
No, I think the only thing is that that question about the the fence actually makes a big difference about visibility. So you might want to tell your clients that unless they want to pay for screening, that they should be thinking about a more opaque fence like what they have, just a comment.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, they definitely, you're speaking a more private fence. Is what
Yeah, if you're to put a chain link fence in, then you would have to be putting more planting, I think, inside there to
Or even a picket fence that you can see through.
No, yeah, the the idea really is for privacy in that yard. Once they develop their yard for for the family, for entertaining, they would like a private fence. So it definitely, I can guarantee will be more opaque on that, at least the rear yard.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Mike Smith?
Yes, I think to follow up on on about the front porch, perhaps in to justify the front porch, you can explain why the applicant would like the front porch and how the applicant would intend to use the front porch.
The applicant, well, applicants online, they want to answer, but from what I understand from them, they would like to, as George spoke, and in these days with with COVID and everybody realizing different parts of their property that they didn't get a chance to enjoy previously. They would like to be out there in front and enjoy their yard and enjoy the neighborhood. And right now, they don't have that opportunity. They 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 like the idea about being able to put a few chairs out there, maybe even one of those portable, you know, chair swings or something like that to sit there and and just enjoy. So that was the intention. That was what we were driving for.
Thank you.
Sarah, anything from the public? Anybody raising their hand to speak or chat?
Yes, Michael Serota.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, we're the homeowners and obviously looking to put this porch in for a lot of the reasons that George suggested. So thank you for seeing the value in us adding the porch. But also, our kids, we have kids in school, they take the bus, or they used to take the bus before COVID. And part of the intention is to sit out, wait for the bus, watch the neighborhood kids get on the bus, watch our kids safely get on the bus. And as they grow up, be, you know, be more of a part of our street, which is a very nice community. We're all very friendly on the street and have like another place to sit and gather and watch our friends drive by the street and just be out in front of the community and the bus stop and enjoy that part of our home. We're also on Broadway, so in the backyard, we do hear motorcycles and cars and trucks. And it doesn't bother us, but the front happens to be a bit quieter. So it's also a nice peaceful place to sit in the morning hours and after-work hours and, you know, enjoy our beautiful town.
Okay, thank you. You gave us some enlightenment as to the use of the porch. Steve, I I think
Yes.
To get a variance from the Z B A, you you know, if you could just check the front yards of the of some of the other houses as to if if they're within the setback or not, and how it compares and and the amount of setback that you're asking for. Looks like five feet.
I will. I happen to know there was an application that worked on the property on this street that that did not require one for the application, but had had one already with the house was constructed. So, you know, is a predate zoning situation. So but I will do a little research along the road there and find some more.
Yeah, I think it'll it'll be very helpful to as justification for the front yard setback variance.
I I just have one more question. And I'm assuming, Stephen, I'm assuming that the hundred sixty-five square feet of the front porch is included in the thirty-one hundred ninety-eight square feet?
It is, Michael. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could, obviously, you're going to recalculate your coverage, and then hopefully it's within the allowable, as you articulated. I think you mentioned that it is within the allowable, so there's no no variance for coverage involved here, if your calculations are correct.
My calculations, yes, and and I will certify them as Mr. Han asked, and I'll also show a little sketch in the drawings.
Okay. I thank you very much for the comment. And is there any other Sarah comment from the public?
No.
Okay, we'll see you next time, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, night. And that then we're done. We're done for the night, and thank you all members. And Lori, I hope it, thank you for your first participation in one of the deliberations. And we'll move forward next week. Thanks, everybody. Safe home.
Thanks.
Bye, everybody.